Is going to be in the future also impacts our budget because it impacts sort of forecasting and what we can do for our budget. And this relates directly to sort of other services. Um, so.
What drives that variability?
So I'm gonna get to that, that's a great question. So that should, the, that's a great question, I will, that will be addressed. Um, fortunately or unfortunately, the challenge that Hubbardson faces is not unique to Hubbardson. As you could expect, the other four member towns are experiencing the same problem. This is somewhat of a cluttered graph and I apologize, it sort of show, tries to show a lot of information in a single slide. What the black dots represent are the year-over-year percent increases, uh, year-over-year percent increase of the QRSD total assessment. So it is the total assessment year-over-year increase. Each line, each vertical line with the multi different colored dots, each color dot then represents if you then took out each member town and calculated its year-over, individual year-over-year increase. So what you can see is that every year, there are towns that have higher year-over-year increases than the overall QRSD increase and towns that have less increase. And there's a wide variability. So in the last ten years, every one of the five member towns at one point or another has been the highest increase in terms of percent assessment increase year-over-year. And towns have also then been on the low end as well. What is also sort of important to point out is in terms of variability. So in years where the QRSD assessment increase has been very modest, in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven and two thousand and twelve, the total QRSD percent increase was only something like two or three percent year-over-year, that's a very modest increase. But in that, those same years, towns such as Hubbardson, Ocam and Hardwick experienced very large increases. So Hubbardson got nearly an eight percent increase when QRSD as a whole only exhibited about a two and a half percent increase. Hardwick got slammed with an over ten percent increase in this, you know, two years earlier with the same sort of, you know, the QRSD is increasing modestly, but yet they're getting a very large percent increase.
What would account for that?
It has to do with the, it has to do with the formula, that's the next, this is where we're getting to, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
So ultimately, the total QRSD year-over-year assessment increases are highly variable. They fluctuate anywhere from minus one to ten percent. But the member towns experienced twice as wide a variability ranging from minus seven to fourteen percent. This generates winners, this generates losers, but every member town has been a winner and every member town has been a loser at one point or another.
And none of us can predict what year we're going to be at which end of the spectrum.
Exactly. So why is that, how does that get, is that, all right, that's still there, I guess. Um, so how do we improve the QRSD assessment process? So firstly, I think we would all say that success of towns depend on good schools, successful schools. We all want our schools to be successful. Uh, but the assessment formula as it exists now is leading or contributing to this wide variability and needs to ultimately be simplified in order to reduce that variability. So.
Where does, can I, can I start?
Yeah, sure, absolutely, yep, absolutely.
Where does the assessment formula come from?
So the assessment formula is based, and I don't know the actual sort of coefficients, but it's based on three factors. One factor is the town's total assessed value, another factor is the town's median income. And then the third factor, which you would think would be the most logical, but is actually sort of the least in terms of how it's determined, is the enrollment population. So for enrollment population being if you have twenty-five percent of the kids in the district, you would pay twenty-five percent of the total assessment. But that's not how it works. What, the way it works is based on the town's total assessed value and median income, there is a minimum level of contribution that then that each town is responsible for, which is based solely on the assessed value and median income. Anything left over.
And that's, and that is dictated by the state of Massachusetts.
Yep. Anything left over is then divvied up in the ratio based on enrollment population. So the enrollment population actually has a very small effect, or I should say smaller effect, on what the assessment is than the total assessed value and median income.
Okay, so, so you're telling me that this graph I'm looking at is a representation year-over-year of those factors you just mentioned.
Correct, that's the current situation. That is the current, that, that's going back in time.
Correct. I can't believe there's that much fluctuation year-over-year on those three criteria you just said.
Yep, I agree.
And this is why this year we've said, okay, timeout, we need to talk to our select board, we need to help start educating people.
So one of the reasons is.
Yeah.
So that's a. That's a really.
There's no way you can, any of us can in any way, shape or form plan or predict the future when you have a variable that's swinging like, like a young.
One of the reasons, one of the reasons to go back to what you, you were pointing out is towns do their reassessments in staggered years. So we're not even all reassessing in the same year.
In the same year.
So for example, let's say the QRSD total assessment remains flat from one year to the next. Population enrollment remains flat one year to the next, median income remains flat one year to the next. The simple fact that in one year, some towns do their reassessment and other towns don't would mean that given every other variable being the same.
Right.
The total assessment is gonna, is gonna vary just based on the, some towns reassessing and every other town staying sort of static and one town changing based on their sort of reassessment.
And that's since you get penalized for doing your reassessment.
That, that's a, that's, that's sort of what we sort of have concluded or sort of figure. Um, and so it, it, it seems very crazy to, for, for lack of a, of a better word. So yeah, that was the second point. The current formula does not even account for the staggered reassessments of each town, because that's obviously a factor in the current formula. So what I wanted to do was examine whether, a different formula, uh, formula based solely on student enrollment population, which we know of at least, I know of at least one regional school district, the Groton Dunstable School District apparently divvies their assessments based solely on enrollment population. Examine whether using that as the formula would improve sort of this variability and help with predictability in terms of what our assessment, Hubbardson's assessment would be year-to-year.
They don't have to follow the same formula we do?
Yeah, kidding, let's back up for a second because I think what's gonna generate the question, we just talked about how the state has dictated this.
Nope. Yeah, okay.
And the state is dictating it because there is no formula set by the charter which is signed by all of the member towns until if the member towns.
We can approve something else, we can do something.
Approve a different methodology, it will take, it, it overrules, it takes, it now becomes a guideline.
So you're talking about in the original agreement to, when they went regional?
Correct.
Yes.
That there's nothing in there?
Yes. And based because of that, we fall, excuse the term, we fall prey
To this default.
to the methodology and the process that is already predefined and now we get into all of these variables that keep swinging.
But we don't have to, we, if, if the five member towns, we, we, we could adopt any sort of formula that we, we would want.
Right.
So anyway, I, we wanted to examine whether, um, using a population or sort of enrollment population formula because that seems logical, that, you know, on, on the, it seems that if you have more students in the, in the district, you would owe more money and the ratio of students would determine sort of what your assessment was. Um, we wanted to look at that. So I have this slide up in case anyone is interested in the numbers, you don't need to focus on it, this is basically.
These are what-if slides.
Yeah, these are hypotheticals. But if anyone is interested in, for example, what the percent of enrollment populations are going back to two thousand and five, one of the first things that struck me is that though our total enrollment population has declined, if you look at the percentages, they have not changed very much. In fifteen years, Berry's gone from thirty-six point five to thirty-nine point six, New Braintree's only gone from six to seven. The numbers over a longer period of time have not fluctuated that much. This then is again another busy slide in case someone wants to go back and look at the, look at the slides like later, basically showing what the percent of the actual contribution is. So this is what it currently is, this is what we are currently contributing and have done historically in terms of percent of the total assessment. If you take the difference between the two, you can see, for example, that at Hubbardson, we last year paid about three and a half percent more than what would have been dictated based on solely population, you know, enrollment population. So if you had gone with a formula based solely on enrollment population, Hubbardson would have paid three and a half percent less. Berry would have paid four point one percent more, um, meaning they paid four percent, four point one percent less than they, they would have with the, uh, population formula, um, had they been in that formula. So if you recalculate Hubbardson's year-over-year assessment change based on this hypothetical new formula, you get this graph, which is much better than the previous one. So if you put the two and a half percent line there, you see there are a couple of years, are a few years going back ten, twelve years where it's above two and a half percent, but for the most part it's under two and a half percent. Um, and if you compare the two side by side, I mean, you can just sort of see the number of times that the, sort of the actual where we've been above that two and a half percent line versus what this hypothetical situation would be. Um, if you just wanna compare it year-to-year, you just take out those, you're just, you're comparing sort of the same years. So how do we improve this QRSD assessment process? I think first, communication and dialogue between the Quabon Regional School District and its member towns must improve. This was in the Berry Gazette a week after our town meeting. So within a few days of us voting on what we perceived was an eight point eight percent budget increase, QRSD came back with new numbers and said, no, it's actually not gonna be eight point eight percent, it would actually be close to seven percent. That's still very high, but the point is is they hadn't even given us a final number when we voted on it as a town. Um, we ultimately gave, you know, approved a lower number than the seven percent anyway, but the point being is that there, it's sort of, they don't even have firm numbers for us for which we're supposed to then base our budget decisions on. Um, and that's sort of, kind of odd for us.
And then I'd like to jump in one more time because I'm gonna throw in one more confusion item, which makes it even more interesting.
Yeah.
When we sat down with the school committee and we, we chatted with them, we were, we were trying to help, we were trying to understand how they arrive at their numbers. Because again, you know, we're, we're obligated to work within a two and a half percent parameter as a town municipality. We have to base everything on that or less. The general feeling that I think we as a committee got from the, the folks from QRSD was they take a shotgun and shoot it up in the air. And I'm sorry, I'm using kind of a weird analogy, but there was no defined, as a matter of fact, what I kept hearing, and this is the confusing piece that becomes interesting, to make those variables less predictable, our assessment can change based on the contribution that the state decides to vote in for that given year. So the more generous the state is, the less the impact becomes on all the member towns. The less generous the state is, the more we become impacted. So in either case, you just add another element to make it even less predictable and make it more, I'll use the term of crap ship as to where things are gonna peg in at.
To go to that too, though, that, because state aid, there is a formula for some state aid, the, the QRSD should at least be able to say, well, we're gonna have this many students, we can at least expect at least this amount of state aid, which would then translate to at least this amount of assessment for its member towns. I think the sense that we got when we met too was that they sort of just gave us a number, there was no real discussion as to what a town could afford. How, you, you're gonna spring an eight point eight percent increase on us, how do you expect us to sort of meet that number? And it was just sort of like, well, that's your problem. And it, it, it was very, it's very challenging from the, the finance committee, from our budgeting sort of standpoint, um, where we're just sort of like dumped a number and now we have to sort of squeeze that in where it's already occupying such a large piece of the pie, of our budget pie. So I think, and this is something that I think we as a finance committee have definitely discussed in terms of we need to communicate better with QRSD, we need to communicate better with the other member towns, whether it's their finance committees or select boards or whoever, um, to try to figure out how we can either align budgetary timetables better so that a week after our town meeting, um, Q, QRSD is not discovering that there's changes to their sort of, you know, proposed budget and then therefore the proposed assessments. Um, and I think there needs to be some discussion when they're still in their budget subcommittee, this occurs in January or February, of what the final numbers are going to be for us so that when we're meeting at that same time, we have numbers that we can sort of start plugging in. When Ryan had made his initial sort of budget projections and we started sitting down for our budget for fiscal year twenty twenty in the, in the wintertime, I think he was looking at like a five per, he was expecting a four or five percent increase. And so to have a, you know, we need to have a dialogue with QRSD or the school committee so that we can at least get a sense of what the percent increase is going to be that we can then put into our, our budget figures. Because these wild swings just destroy our budget, hinder any sort of other sort of planning in the, in the remainder of our budget for the rest of our sort of services that are, you know, less than fifty percent of the budget anyway.
I think you have to have that conversation to get the answer to what, but you also have to have the conversation to get the answer to why.
Why it's currently like this, or?
Why the increase, why the variability, you know, I mean that's.
Well, so in the, in this past year, the QRSD's total budget increase was modest, it was only like two and a half, two point six percent.
Sure.
Then it trickles down due to state aid and that's, again, that's a formula that they should be at least aware of because it's on their end.
Sure.
You know, even if state aid remained level, um, with, state aid was about fifty, I wanna say about fifty percent of the QRSD budget, leaving the remainder fifty percent to the towns as, as the assessment. Uh, but even if state aid were to be constant, then, you know, why are we getting eight, eight point eight percent? Um, Hardwick or Berry, someone got a minus one percent.
Right.
And it's, it's, it's very challenging for us. This year and next year, it might be a different town. You know, next year it could be Berry, they could get the eight percent, we'll get a two percent. Two percent is great for that year for our budget, but it makes it hard to project.
It doesn't get rid of this systemic problem, which is, and that's really what we're after, is not so much is, is we're going to you as the, the select board. Can you help implement or start towards working out a solution that will help all the towns involved to be able to predict?
Another variable though that has definitely affected all the towns and it has also been used by the school department sometimes as an excuse is that the, um, the state has not always been prompt in terms of how much the town, the towns are going to get. So the school department is trying to come up with a budget without even knowing
So yeah, in.
what we're getting for the chap, it's chapter.
But you, you.
In response to that, yeah, in response to that, sorry, in response to that, if you look at their state aid going back years,
Go ahead, you, you.
it, it, it has fluctuated, but it's, it's, I, you know, one or two percent change year-to-year. So it, it does change and it, it may not be predictable, but then even if you then, if you wanna plug in a number, you could plug in a zero percent change, plug in a one percent change, a one percent increase or a one, one percent decrease. And you could sort of put in a window of what your state aid is going to be. And again, it being based on so, some factors such as student enrollment population, you, you should be able to at least, you might not get an accurate number, but you should be able to get some number from which you can then base other numbers on.
So it's not the state aid that's causing the huge swings, it's more the, uh, assessment process?
I, it's really more the process than anything.
So all the towns, that we need to come up with a way, so whether it's based on, uh, child population or enrollment.
Yep.
If the other towns are experiencing these same swings and they're feeling the way we're all feeling, they'd be, would they be receptive to that, to that, just the enrollment number?
Right.
Right, as at least trying to remove a variable, at least that removes some variables.
Right.
If, if my Jamie to go along with that question because I was gonna ask it in a different way
Yeah.
'cause I, in terms of what you've shown us in the hypothetical, were, were we one of the only towns that might, that showed a benefit by the school enrollment or?
No, you're right.
New Braintree benefits probably, yeah.
Or, or all of them, because I'm thinking in terms of if it's a selling point to try to get the entire region or say, yeah, let's go with a new.
If we go back to that slide.
Are they all gonna benefit from it?
The one town that looks to lose is Berry.
Yep.
Berry literally has never been, if you look at that example, there's no red, which means that they've always been on the positive side. So you, we would have to be careful on how we sell it to Berry.
Well, exactly, because to that point.
All the other four towns, however, would see benefit.
And, and.
But in a, in a re, in a regional system, Dave, though, as you probably know, one town doesn't agree, it doesn't happen.
It works in the vote.
I think they all have to agree.
They all, all that happens. Oh, correct.
That's why I was asking in terms of the selling point.
I think the selling point, and, because there's, there's really two points and, and, well, Berry may not be sold on that point, the, the point of trying to at least reduce year-to-year fluctuations.
There's still a percentage predictability here.
Yeah, to at least, at least if it stabilizes their budget, and for them, it may take a, it would be a hit one year, but then after that, it would then be sort of a, a more easy, um, slope, if you will.
Even using this very chart, two thousand nineteen, they saw a four point one percent decrease, but in two thousand fourteen, it was only one point eight eight percent. So again, they're seeing swings that are, that have got to be impacting their predictability for budgeting purposes. So again, the key is it's not so much who's gonna win one, one year or lose one year, it's how do we make it stable so that all the towns can actually budget accurately?
Yeah.
Start into things like five-year planning, ten-year planning. Because there's no way we could accurately do that right now based on the percentage impact this has on our overall budget.
Begs the question, what do we do, you know, because we're, we're a five-town regional, but you're also a single town of Hubbardson, you know, we can sit here and talk about it and so forth, and say, that's great, but.
We take the first step. The first step is, I mean, I don't know what the proper process is, but I think, I think there, there should be some sort of a, um, a meeting, whether it's one by one, or sit down and just kind of throw it on the table.
A sit-down, yeah.
No, we have a joint meeting with all the towns, we've done that before.
We, we did, well, they had, they had one earlier this year, we, we were all attending, all the boards were there and.
And if nothing else, maybe gear, is, again, we don't, we can use data, just, the, the biggest issue is predictability
About the closing of the school.
and stable budgeting, those are the two key issues. And if we don't get hung up on dollars and cents on a year-by-year basis and we stay with that as the objective, I think it's something that everybody would at least listen to.
I, I mean, another thing would be to even, you know, this is just one hypothetical that, you know, I think makes sense, again, as a, as a enrollment population percentage, just conceptually for fairness, makes sense that the more students you have, the more you should pay, you know, a, a, a extremely wealthy town that has one student is gonna be paying, you know, disproportionately high amount just simply because the, the, you know, of, of, of the wealth is, you know, but there, there are other ways of, you know, if, if other formulas we, that could perhaps be devised, simply getting all five towns onto the same reassessment cycle would be a way of reducing one, reducing one variable
Yeah, right, that could even work.
or one unpredictable variable, um, may help stabilize some of these wild swings in the year-over-year increases.
Would it be enough for us as a town to, uh, put, put in a request to the, uh, school department for that kind of a meeting? And where we could make this available to the people, the, uh, other representatives of the town and see what happens there with the discussion, but ask for the meeting, what do you guys feel about that?
Yeah, we may even want, uh, it would have been nice to have the Hubbardson School Committee members here tonight to bounce this off of them.
Yeah, right.
This is the first step, but, you know.
Can I ask a, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm looking at this, this color chart here that you had on the screen a little bit.
Multiple dot, yep.
And obviously Berry's all green there.
Oh, yep.
What extraneous variables impact the town of Berry for having the school within its borders? For example, emergency services, right? They're the, they're the first responders to anything that happens at the school. I mean, maintenance of plowing the roads and plowing the lots and fields, is that distributed amongst the district? Or is that falling on the shoulders of the town of Berry?
I, that would have to go to the, I, the QRSD would know, I, I, I am not aware.
I have no idea what the answer to that question is.
I can say, I, as a side note, sort of to answer the first question about EMS, there's sort of a mutual aid. So Hubbardson has certainly responded to the Quabon re, uh, high school if, for example, Berry is out on another call.
Sure.
Um, so, you know, certainly there, there's a mutual aid there that, you know, we, we would certainly respond to that as well, so. But that would be a question for, um, uh, QRSD, I suppose.
Well, I would think the officer that's assigned to the school would be divided above, you know, it's one thing if it's an emergency call.
Oh, yeah, sure, security, so the school security would be a line item on their budget, so that is, yeah, that's.
Yeah, right. And they're plowing, they plow their own parking lots and all that, that's not Berry, that's a, that's a line item.
Okay, okay.
They're landscaping, that's a line item.
Right, okay, so that's what, that's what I'm getting at.
That's divided up, it's property related.
Yeah, yeah, that's factored into their budget, yeah, it's all part of their budget, yeah.
But there is a fine line in terms of the property because we've seen it here with the center school, 'cause that just came up at a, another meeting we had and I can't recall. And I think it involved the, uh, the roof because the question came up, why isn't this part of the, uh, school, the department's overall budget? And then that fine line was.
Well, we own the school.
We, yeah, we own the school, so we have to cover that cost.
Wasn't it if it's over five thousand?
Yeah, there was, if the town thing, there's something around that too, yeah.
That, that is, yes, that's the Jamie, yeah, over, anything over five thousand, yeah.
We have to pay for.
Thank you for that, yeah. Any other thoughts in terms of what you'd like to see us do with this?
You know, I, I think dialogue is really the first step and again, whether it's, it's going to population or it's just having the towns all agree to, to do an assessment on this in the same year, I mean, there's, there's a few different ways we can help. Again, the objective is to get those swings to stop going in, in both directions. I mean, it's, yeah, wahoo, we're down six percent this year. Well, guess what? Two years from now, we're gonna pay dearly for that. So we're really better off coming in on something where it's a lot more level.
Wonder how hard it would be to, to synchronize all the towns to do their assessment.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know what that involves, but I imagine, or if it's possible.
Well, that would require a meeting then, you know.
Yeah, I think it needs to be discussed.
With at least representatives from each town, if not all of the boards, as they did. Um, that meeting we was, I was talking about earlier, it had to do with the closing of one of the schools. That's why all the boards were asked to be at that particular meeting with the school department. So no, definitely, I think you have to have face-to-face dialogue with them, just to throw it out and, uh.
Right.
Should we request it or ask Ryan to at least bounce it off the, uh, student team?
Yeah, but I, I think it would be a good idea to have the school committee members here, um, the selectmen from the other towns.
Yeah, they may, they may have.
Maybe, also maybe the people from the school themselves, you know.
Yeah, the administration.
Yeah, no secrets.
Well, that's what I was talking about, I was talking about the, with the school department.
Yes. Well, I think we should have something internal to Hubbardson first, right? I think we should get school committee here, selectmen here, you can come back. We can show them what you just showed us and we can tell what our plan is going forward. Then we bring all the towns together, we try to get everyone together on the same page and like you said, we all agree to the same situation, we can write our own charter and come up with our own formula to distribute the money amongst the towns.
How soon would you like to see that?
Uh, before school starts.
In terms of, to get on.
Before our next budget.
Before, no, to get on, I, I mean, to get on our agenda, next meeting or a, a month from now or.
Yeah.
You would just need to see who was able to come and just redump to find, you know, redar.
Right, right.
Well, that's when, enough time.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, especially, right, with vacations, so, you know, I mean.
To ask, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we should wait until, it's not gonna change this year, that's for sure, it's a.
No, but we could, should probably send an inquiry out relatively quickly with maybe a few different dates together.
Right. Yeah.
Right, that's what I would say, I just wanna suggest.
And see if we can get.
To our school committee people.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, 'cause they came to our meeting, in fact, yeah, they came to our meeting, yep.
They, they know our meeting, willing, yeah.
Did they have any ideas on, 'cause they, they know about the assessment, you know, the formula and did they mention any different?
Have you ever heard the term deer in the headlights?
Okay, well, yeah, I kind of feel the same way.
And I think, I think they were almost caught off guard because we, we were just, it was almost like, not a revelation, but we were realizing
We were shocked.
the impact was just so significant, it was like, and we were asking questions, but I'm not sure they were prepared to answer them because it was like, well, what can we do?
The, uh, it was the, the QRSD administration came to that meeting as well and they were the ones that presented a lot of the information, um, all the information, so yeah, we.
Which helped us in turn understand a little bit more about what, why, et cetera.
And I wonder how many other towns are under this agreement that don't have their own agreement?
Oh, like other regional school districts? Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I just, I mentioned Groton Dunstable because Ryan had mentioned to us
Yeah.
that they're, they're, they're a two-town regional school district and that they base it on, uh, population and enrollment.
Population and enrollment.
Enrollment, yeah.
That, that the one who's a school committee member?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, he, it's his whole inventory list, yeah.
Yeah, it is, it is. So that would be something we could have, we could say, look, these five towns are using this formula where, you know, there's only a couple of towns left using this formula because we haven't come up with our own.
Right.
We just defaulted into this, by not making our own decisions.
That's something we could certainly look into is the, all of the regional school districts and sort of what their current formulas are.
Well, then, as a beginning step, going back to Chris's suggestions.
So I would just talk to Ryan, you know, and Bobby can talk to Ryan, obviously, um, there, so the meeting schedule upcoming, your next meeting is July twenty-second, then August twenty-sixth, you only have that late meeting because Ryan will be gone, um, for military and then you'll have one September ninth, so I would suggest that you try for.
The late August or the first one in September?
August, and the first one in September, 'cause I feel like July twenty-second might be too soon, but you can try it.
That might be too quick.
Yeah.
You know, I would send out like three of those dates.
You throw it out as a date.
Yeah, we should try as soon as we possibly can.
Yep, we, I was, I would send out those three dates and then, um, you know, see who can attend and, and try to get, like I said, obviously you guys, we'd be here, finance committee, um, and then the school committee, and start it that way.
Well, and underlining the school committee members because that's one of the, the whole point of all this.
Right.
We've now all heard it, so we want them to hear it so that they can.
Well, you said they already heard it, right? And you said you're.
Well, they, they.
Well, not, not this data, no, not this, not this data, they heard how the, the QRSD's explaining how, how sort of it, uh, yeah.
Not this presentation, not this presentation.
Yeah. Well, let's get our house in order, we'll tell them what we're planning to do, what our strategy's gonna be to level this budget off a little bit going forward. And then we'll try to get the five towns together and we'll pitch our, pitch our suggestion and see how it goes.
Sounds like a plan, okay, so, can we pass that on to Ryan?
Yeah.
Do we have five school committee members?
So we currently, we have three, so the way the, and this is another crazy thing is it's, it's sta, it's. So we currently, we have three, so the way the, and this is another crazy thing, is it's, it's sta- it's, the, the different towns have different number of members, because it's based on, I believe, that's based on population of the town, which is then reevaluated every ten years. So we currently have three, Barry, for example, I believe has four. Um, so there are different number, you know, New Braintree probably has, has less, um, but we have three members.
Debbie, Mac, and Phil.
Uh huh. So, it's, um, it sounds good, let's, let's go ahead with that.
I think we got a first step.
Thanks, Josh, that was, it's a lot of work.
No, well, not yet.
Well, no, cause we have transfers, we have transfers.
No, we, we've got, yeah, we've got the next one.
Nice, yeah.
All right, then, uh, we'll close the discussion on this, and we'll move to the next one, on the new business, the F nineteen end of the transfers, cause I know Ryan wanted to get that done tonight.
Yeah, so, this is, um, so there is one that needs to be signed by the finance committee chair, I don't know who acts in Susan's, cause Susan's not here, vice chair.
I don't think we have an official vice chair.
Susan is, is still your chair?
Yeah.
Do you have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do have a quorum.
Yeah, so, yeah, cause this shows by the chairperson, but you would need to have somebody in person.
Yeah.
I'm serious.
I took the three or four.
To designate, you know.
So you guys would need to vote within your board to designate.
I nominate, I, you nominate, I second.
All right.
Any discussion?
Does anyone else want it? I'll accept it, I'll accept it, um, unless anyone else wants it, I mean.
I mean, I don't care, I'm, I'm gonna do it, yeah.
Okay.
Congratulations, Josh.
Okay, thank you, well, we've gotta make a motion to accept. Vote, I vote on it, or.
All those in favor.
Okay, all right, I'm the vice chair, so then I need to sign something?
Congratulations.
You will, once you guys all, uh, the.
Yeah, I'll put that in the minutes, make sure that's definitely in the minutes.
I am, don't worry. So, this is a request for transfer from the reserve fund, this is, if anybody's been to the senior center lately, it's hot, it's, uh, right after town meeting. It, the air conditioner went out, we've tried to have it fixed, we've had it looked at, we've had quotes, so we did receive a quote, and nothing is set in stone, what we wanna do is just reserve that money just in case, so we have enough money to cover the biggest expense, and then obviously, we could go down from there. So what this is, is this is a request, it says a request hereby made for the following transfer from the reserve fund in accordance with chapter forty, section six of the Massachusetts General Laws. Amount requested is ten thousand dollars, it's to be transferred from account zero, zero, one, two, one, zero, five, one, one, zero, 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 which is the town offices, utilities, and maintenance. Currently, there is a budget, um, present balance and set appropriation is one hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty cents. Amount in account only includes current budgeted items. So the amount is requested for, and it says to cover the cost of repairing the air conditioning unit required for proper function of the senior center. The expenditure is extraordinary and, or for, unforeseen for the following reasons. The air conditioner unit stopped functioning shortly after town meeting, since that time, we have been working on possible solutions and concluding the best fix to be a multi-split system installed in two locations, so the police department is also suffering, we've had them come out about three times trying to fix it, and then it goes in and out, so, you know, they're, they're having that issue as well. Doesn't mean, like I said, that that's a hundred percent set on what's going to be done, but if it needs to be done, that money will cover.
So, we're transferring it so that at least it's there, but not necessarily that we're gonna spend ten, ten thousand dollars.
So your term correct, so it's not necessarily that you're going to be. But it is, um, again, it's a transfer from the reserve fund into the.
What's the goal now with that transfer?
It's ten thousand dollars. Yep, so this would be a, um, so action of the finance committee, it's a date of meeting, obviously, we know that number of members present and voting, and then you would need to, if you approve it, that you would need to approve that ten thousand dollars to be transferred.
So we need a motion.
So they, so they would need a motion to, for themselves, and we, we then wouldn't need a motion, right?
Yeah, and then you would make a motion, just to cover.
So you make a motion to approve that transfer.
Transfer, ten thousand dollars from the reserve fund to the town u- office utilities and maintenance fund.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Was that, was that for fiscal year twenty twenty, reserve fund?
It's for the new, it would be for the new year, uh, end of year, so it'd be nineteen, yes, nineteen.
End of the year, end of the year transfer, yeah.
Oh, nineteen, oh.
As it's written, yeah.
So we have to have an official motion?
Okay, yep.
All those in favor?
Okay, so, uh.
So I'll make the motion to approve the transfer as presented.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes, yes, okay.
So this is what you need to fill out.
There you go.
Yeah, and then we'll also need a s- a, a signature on these, so these are year end line transfer requests. This is to transfer, um, set, the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars from the town clerk expense to go to the town clerk salary account. Also, five hundred dollars from the uni- municipal clerk one to the town clerk salary amount, and then five hundred dollars from elections and registrations to the town clerk salary account. And what these were for is Joyce had vacation that was banked, um, that wasn't appropriated at the beginning of the year, because we didn't know that she was retiring at the time, so what that's gonna do is it's going to fulfill, fulfill her vacation buyout.
Can that be done in one motion, for the finance committee, and then us also?
Yes, so. Yep, so you could say, you know, to approve as presented.
Are there any other transfers of them?
There will be, not on this one though, so we'll do this one, and then we'll do the next one.
So I'll make the motion to.
Well, they, they, they gotta go first, so.
We'll make a motion to approve the, the transfers on.
Take clerk transfers to take care of the vacation, I'll second.
Yeah. Discussion, discussion, all in favor?
Okay, well, we'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve those transfers as presented.
Is there a second motion? And second, any discussion?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah, they sign the, the bottom of that one.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, this is another year end line transfer, what this is, is, transfer from website maintenance, seventeen hundred dollars to IT maintenance. And then that, what that is, is to cover two new computers that were needed in town, and then also library wages to the library director, and again, we have the same issue with Jane where we have the vacation buyout, so her funds were lower, so we needed that two hundred dollars to fulfill her salary.
Make a motion to approve the transfers.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Okay.
So you would sign that one, so.
Got a motion from the board?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the transfers as presented.
Second?
Seconded.
Okay, motion made, and second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
So these would need to be signed by you, no, you're good, by Jeff, cause you're acting chair. So the other thing, while you guys are here, before you guys adjourn your meeting, this is something that we're gonna be discussing here, but what I'm gonna do is give you a copy as well. This was done years ago, it hasn't been addressed, and it's something that we're addressing on this board, it's a liaison list. So say if somebody has an issue, and they need to contact somebody for the finance committee, or for the board of selectmen, you kind of say, okay, Dave, we'll do this one, or, you know, whatever, and you allot it. So it's not something that you have to do today, but I want you to know that's being done, so if this could be something that you guys would put on a soon, you know, agenda that you guys could work out, that would be great, and there's a copy of that.
Excuse me, Kai.
Thank you.
Does that it, for the first, is that if it transfers?
Mm-hmm, and it hasn't been, so, yeah, so fine, yep, so that's for transfers. And that's what I have for the finance committee.
Thank you guys for being here tonight, and, uh, helping us do this, and again, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Save it, keep it available.
That's something that we'll post as well, and we'll make sure that I'll talk to Ryan tomorrow about it, and let him know that that's what you're looking to do for those next meetings, and I'll, we'll throw those dates.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
Yeah. That's great.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll wait till, till they, uh, exit. Don't trip as you run out.
Good evening.
We'll walk somberly.
Okay, I can, uh, under new business, I can forward these, uh, goals and, uh, objectives, what did Ryan wanna do with this?
So Ryan just wanted to know what your goals and obje- objectives were for the year, so if it's something that you know ahead of time. You didn't stop recording, did you? No, I just wanted to check on these things. Oh, okay. I'm like, oh no, I saw you, um, so it's if you guys have goals that you wanna see done throughout the year, and if it's something that you know off the top of your head, if it's something that you wanna think about, and wait till he's here.
I would, I would recommend, if the board goes along with this, that we put this off, so that we can all think about it a little bit, un- until, and, and that also for the next item, the town administrator goals, obviously Ryan's not here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if we can, um, pass on these and put them on a, a future agenda.
Sure.
Just some things to think about, the, uh, the, uh, communication tower, you know, let's give Ryan a heads up too, to think about it, there was, remember the guy, they were supposed to put the tower up?
Mm, sure.
Yeah.
And then we've got the house lots on, uh.
Ragged Hill.
Ragged Hill to sell.
Okay.
That's something to think about, and then, uh, did the transfer finally go through Pat, do you remember, for the lot?
Still haven't found out, I think some, Ryan was gonna look into that.
We gotta, okay. That's for the lot next to.
What is it?
They're gonna do the land swap, one lot on Ragged Hill for that, possibly where the senior center was going.
Okay.
It's where the for sale sign is across in the rec field, that was called, uh, I forget the family's name.
I think he said it's something that was almost finalized, right?
Okay, I'll ask him.
We gotta get a roof on the bandstand at Curtis Rec Field.
Okay.
That can be a goal.
Okay.
Well, I, I was suggesting, I was suggesting that we put this off for another meeting, give it a.
But as long as you have a couple things, like throw them out, yeah.
Yeah, she said she wanted to hear.
Oh, okay, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, okay.
More than happy to take them down right now.
So for the, for the roof on the bandstand, is that something, I know that the Lions have a lot to do with that, or is it something that you're looking for?
I think maybe CPA.
Uh, that's what I'm wondering, is CPA, or I don't think Parks has a huge budget.
Well, I think we need to, we need to figure, you know, that's, can be one of Ryan's goals, to figure out where the funding can come from.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yep.
Yeah.
What qualifies, what doesn't qualify, what we can do, but.
I know one thing that they talked about before, I know Katie had discussed it, and I think it would be a great idea, um, is it like a pavilion up there? You know, somewhere as well, just so you can have like a function spot, or a covered spot when you have things, you know, so that's also another thing to look at.
Right, yeah.
I was down in Upsbridge last weekend for baseball tournaments, and the Lions club has a huge pavilion down there with picnic tables under it, it's beautiful.
And Chris, I, I know you were on the facts committee, but just so you know, I, I think I can speak for the board when we say we wanna see that place, kept up his best, uh, glory.
Well, I, you know, Ryan sent out his email for this note, one of the board of selectmen goals was to maintain that park up there, because that's the jewel of Hubbardson, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, we wanna keep the place looking. Exactly.
We wanna make sure that it stays that way.
Sure.
Exactly.
And not only, you know, not to get into the conversation, but that roof, obviously, is functional also, because there's a lot of valuable irrigation equipment underneath that bandstand. It's just not a empty thing, so we need to preserve it for the protection of the equipment also.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, and, yeah, yeah.
I think maybe we should look into, you know, along with Katie's idea, and the roof, maybe putting together a CPA request. So, I mean, I'm certain the town would approve something like that.
Well, I know that they approved all that work up there for the fields.
Yeah, I mean, but that's what people see, and it's for the town, so.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And anything else that they need?
Yeah.
The roof, uh, you know, whatever else to think of.
Yeah, yeah.
How's the floor up there, just curiosity, because that's where everything is housed under, the, the bouncing floors, concrete?
It's good, it's concrete.
Fabulous.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, so I have those four things, anything else off the top of your head?
Okay. Okay, uh, selecting liaison list and appointments, we've got a couple of choices we can do here.
So there are two appointments, the liaison list, again, if you wanna take it, now that it's been uploaded, or if you guys wanna, Dan's not here, so I'd advise you not deciding, just because he's not here.
Well, we could give a lot, a lot of them to him, since he's.
When he's not here, that's how usually people get the chair when they're not here. Um, so there's the liaison list, and then there's the appointment, so that's up to you if you wanna do them, there's only two appointments that I see.
Oh, we're going, jumping, you want, jumping down to item seven then, is that what you're saying?
I would hold on. Yeah, it's all the same.
Are these appointments, are these, is it what you're talking about?
It's on four, it's still on four, selectmen liaison list and appointments.
Yeah, an appointment.
Add appointments, okay.
So there's two openings for the board of selectmen, so it's acting as, so economic development, which, I don't know, Pat, I've heard that you were on that, that you picked that?
Yeah.
Okay, so that one's all set, so, um, we'll get you sworn in for that, and then emergency management planning committee. That's an opening that the, um, board of selectmen is an ex officio member, so I don't know if that's something that.
How often do they meet, do you know?
I don't, I, I don't, Dennis heads a lot of that, so he would have more, you know, answers to that than I would.
So, we've got the list right here.
This is the old list.
That's the liaison list.
Obviously, right, the lia- liaison list, um, so.
So what it is.
Why don't I just take over everything that Mike had?
That was a s- a suggestion earlier, which is.
That's a good idea.
Unless somebody else on the board wants something in particular.
No, I didn't, no.
The only thing I'd like, I'd like to do a DPW.
Okay.
All you want?
How about it?
Dan does it now, I mean, if.
Oh, Dan does it?
Yeah, if Dan's all right with that.
Okay.
You wanna wait till he's here, or just store it?
Well, I reached, I, I tried to reach out to Dan this afternoon by te- because I knew this was coming up, and I wanted to know, you know, if he had any specific.
Well, so.
Yeah, I think he's probably all right with that.
But he, he, he didn't get back to me, so, so I'm.
I mean, you can look off on that one, if everybody's okay with keeping that, do you have that list, is that, does that have people on it?
This is the old one, yeah, yeah, this is one.
Yeah, can you see that one, and I'll make the copy.
I brought from home, yeah.
Okay, good. Um, and obviously, some of the people have changed, but if you wanna leave it as that, now you do have some, so the animal control, they don't go to anybody. Select board liaison for board of assessors, there is not one.
I could do that, with this one.
I'm gonna write on yours, okay?
Yeah, sure.
And a lot of times, people usually reach out to the board as a whole anyway, so just come, you know.
They do, you know, I mean, it's usually not an issue, but, you know, it's nice to have something in place that, you know, we can say, hey, you know, I have an issue.
You need someone, yeah, yeah.
Put Pat down for the, uh, highway, even though Dan's name is there on the old one, just, just so that we, we can then pass it on to Dan, you know. Or you can talk to him too, you know.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Okay. Um, town administrator, Dan, okay, so open space committee?
I'll take it.
Okay.
You get a lot of open space, Chris.
Uh, so it looks like Jeff and Dan both.
The school, is that the school?
Town administrator, yeah, town clerk.
I'll do it.
I, can I, no, I'm just kidding.
You can change it.
No, okay, good, um, executive, administrative assistant, it's, it's everybody, I mean, that goes, she falls under everybody.
Well, I've tried to be visiting her a lot.
Yeah.
The building inspectors, that's regionalized regarders, so Ryan might take that, as of now, we'll see what happens. Um, so I'll send out this list, and then we'll look over what else we need to do, um, and we'll go from there, okay? So we'll make those few changes.
You're gonna, you're gonna update it?[1594.02]
Yes, well, Bobby will, so you want a copy of it?
So you're gonna keep, you're gonna keep, you're gonna keep that?
I'm keeping your list, do you want a copy of it?
What was the, what was the second page?
Nothing, your numbers.
No, no. Yeah, that, I just brought this in front, you know.
Make, yeah, just make a copy and then we can, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And then, so Economic Development, you said you'd want that, and who wanted the Emergency Management Planning Committee, did we not, you want both of those?
I'll do it. I'll do it. I'm sure it's not that.
Okay, so I'll write those slips for you, or she'll write them, you can be sworn in to the House, okay?
All right. Uh, I got a question on item five, um, Board of Selectmen policies, uh, I think Ryan printed up, had Code of Ethics and the Board of Selectmen rules, and I guess he wanted it, us to either make comments, changes, or to adopt them.
Right.
Is this something that, um, we can do tonight, or do we need to, um?
So they are in yours. Yep, yep, so, I mean, if it's something that you wanna review, they were in your packet last week.
Have you guys had the chance to see, to look these over at all?
They're in yours, everything does say the Town of Hubbardston on them. So that one, the first one is five A, under Code of Ethics.
Yeah, I'm looking at that right now.
This is a big read, do we need to do this tonight?
No, we can wait.
You wanna put it off to next meeting?
It's up to the board, whatever, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's put it off so we can read it at our leisure.
Okay, so let's, uh.
Instead of going through all these pages now.
Table this for another.
Sure.
Meeting, okay. So on both of them, okay, we'll table it.
Yep. Town Administrator report you can't do, obviously, cause he's not here and I don't have it.
So we'll, we'll pass over the Town Administrator report, okay, number seven, appointments and resignations requires, um.
Hey.
So this is.
Motions to accept and, uh.
Yep, so this first one is, obviously, Chris is here, um, Chris is resigning from the Parks Commission effective immediately, so if people aren't unaware in the Town of Hubbardston, if you are running on as a Board of Selectmen, you cannot run on any other committee as a member, obviously, except for the ex officio members. So this is his resignation.
So we'll take a motion to accept, okay?
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, Chris Pregel's resignation.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
And that's from Parks.
From Parks Commission.
Parks Commission, any discussion? All in favor? Yes, okay, can we get a motion for Alice, uh, Livdall?
Yes.
Yep, so this is Alice Livdall, she's on the, she's a planning board member and she is going to be on the Community Preservation Committee again as an ex officio. They went through their list of members and are doing that as well.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Alice, uh, Livdall for a Community Preservation Committee representing the Planning Board.
Is there a second to the motion?
Seconded.
May I even second, any discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, uh, Francois Steger.
Yep, and he is Capital Improvement Planning Committee and he is representing the Planning Board.
I'll make a motion to appoint Francois Steger to Capital Improvement Planning Committee representing the Planning Board.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
May I even second, any discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to appoint Walter Scott on Council of Aging.
Seconded.
Seconded.
It's made second, any discussion, not, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, we also, with the wage authorizations, now, we need a motion here ni- uh, to waive the notification process for each of these.
So these are both, the only reason you're seeing these, the wage study was done and obviously those were already approved, these are in front of you because of the new positions. Obviously, myself going from the Executive Assistant to the Town Clerk, and then Bobby taking on the role as Executive Assistant.
Okay, so can we have a motion, uh, again, needed to waive the notification process for Laurie?
I'll make a motion to waive the notification period for Laurie Reed for Town Clerk.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, and for Roberta, motion?
John's name?
Tebow.
Tebow, yep.
Tebow, I'll make a motion to waive the notification period for Roberta Tebow for Executive Assistant.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Made in second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Yes, uh, I recommend we pass over item nine, if both of those are Dan's. So that brings us to matters not reasonably interested by the Chair, nothing, no public press question or answer, so we'll accept our motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn is made in second at seven, seven thirty-five, seven thirty-five, all in favor?